Welcome, friends. Thank you for being here tonight. So tonight we gather for a forum. This is different than maybe the traditional debate model that you might be used to. A forum is intended to be a place for people to share their opinions and thoughts. It's a non-confrontational medium. I will not be fact-checking anyone tonight. But your statements tonight are being heard by many and will inform their decision in just, I think, forty-seven short days until reelection. So the format for our forum tonight is that candidates will first introduce themselves briefly, no more than one minute, please. And then we will begin the process of giving each candidate an opportunity to answer four questions. The questions were provided to the candidates about a week ago so that they might have time to really think about and prepare for their answer tonight. Each candidate will be given two minutes to answer each of those questions. We have time cards. That means you have used a minute and a half, and that means your two minutes are up. Once your time is up, I ask that you finish the sentence that you are on and then stop speaking to allow time for others. If a candidate speaks longer than just finishing their sentence, then we will have some work. All right. I will randomly rotate the order that the candidates speak in. I know it's a little awkward casting the mics, but it felt like a fair way to do that. Let's use our time tonight to model respectful and professional discourse. This is particularly important in a school board race, I believe, because there are a lot of little faces looking to us to model... Any questions? All right, let's begin with introductions. We'll just start and go down the road.
Good evening. Oh, yeah, you can hear me. I apologize in advance. I'm losing my voice. My name is Christina Bradley-Kahn. Those of you who already know me may know me as Chris Khan, and there probably aren't that many of you who already know me. We moved to Fergus Falls a year ago, myself, my husband, and our four children. The reason I'm running for school board is that I have two children already in the public school system and two more that will go through the public school system. Being involved in the community I live in is very important to me and to model for my children how to be a good citizen. Being actively involved where you live is what makes a community a community. So that's why I'm running, and it's really nice to meet you all.
Hi, good evening. My name is Tim Manson. For those of you that don't know me, I'm a Fergus Falls resident since 2020. I have two children that just recently graduated from KSS. And I am running for school board because I am particularly concerned about the quality of education that we've seen here in our city and that decline, the mental health issue that's going on, as well as parental involvement. So looking forward to this evening, and thank you all for being here.
Hi, everybody. My name is Jenny Christensen. My family and I moved here in July of 2019. I am a local business owner and I have two children, one in the school system who just started first grade, and another who is three and is currently attending CME courses. The reason I am running for school board is that I firmly believe being a part of a community is a give-and-take relationship. You can't just keep taking and taking and taking without giving back, and I feel that running for public office in a local capacity is one of the ultimate ways to give back to your community. And I personally love this school system that we have here. That's one of the reasons we moved here, and I would love to continue seeing it thrive.
Hello. I'm Micah Naramani. I'm born and raised here. I'm a small business owner as well. I have four children in the school system, and I'm running just to hopefully bring more parental rights uniting and teachers' involvement to get it more... Not so much just, you know... Sorry, I'm losing my notes in my chair. I just want a more open parental involvement system going on and keep not biased in the school board and in the school.
Hi. Thank you, guys, for all coming. I'm Christina Glass. I am married. I moved here in 2014, graduated in 2015. I am a mother of three, and I started running for school board because I wanted to improve the education for our children and get a control on the bullying situation we have, including parent rights, because I feel like they've kind of been taken away, and improve the special education programs as much as I can.
Hi. My name is Steve Vigasama, and I am a Homer. I was born... I was raised in Fergus Falls, moved away for a little bit, came back in 2010. Since then, I've been serving my community in various ways, including the past eight years here on the school board. The reason why I'm running for reelection is I find this work incredibly rewarding. I had no idea how much I would learn when I got onto the board, and being able to be part of what I find are most important, people in our community are kids, is development, and being able to help them in some way to become... Among with staff and teachers, it's a collaborative effort to help kids leave our school when they graduate and become productive citizens and very confident in their abilities. So I guess I'm just asking for your vote.
Thank you all for coming. My name is Zachary Blumberg. I'm a parent of three children. My oldest is twenty-four, a graduate of Fergus Falls High School. My daughter is thirteen and in eighth grade, and my son is ten and in fifth grade. I'm running for school board due to issues I found within the school district, issues within navigating IEP and 504 plans for our students, as well as a severe bullying issue that I find. I also feel that there needs to be much more openness within the school board, speaking to our community and letting them know the things that are going on within our district. I have lived here about fifteen years. I'm originally from Detroit, Michigan. I'm just hoping for your vote. Thank you very much.
Good evening. I'm Kelly Brown. I am born and raised in Fergus Falls. I am a mother of three biological children, and I have taken in our mother's four children, but I have five remaining at home. I have decided to run for school board because I was approached by several parents, teachers, support staff, community members, that asked that I get involved to stand up for their rights, and they feel that transparency is not happening between our school board and our teachers, our support staff, community members, or even our students. And so I am running to ready to protect our school systems.
Hi. I'm Arden Chino. I am married with four children and currently have two children in the school system. I am running for school board because I would like to see some changes being in the school district.
All right. Thank you very much. So let's start with question one. What skills, strengths, and/or experiences will you bring, and how will these benefit the school board? And the question is up on the board for the audience to read. Kelly Brown, can you start?
All right. Throughout my career, I have gained extensive experience that aligns with school board's needs. My background in policy drafting will aid in creating effective school policies while my budget management skills ensure efficient resource use and financial oversight supporting boards' fiscal health and educational programs. My strengths include addressing crisis, which have a quick need to handle complex situations with calm, solution-oriented approaches. Additionally, ongoing professional development and educational trends keeps me informed about the latest advancements, allowing me to contribute innovative ideas that meets the needs of all students. I also excel in building strong partnerships with nearly everyone I meet. I take pride in being a people person and enjoy collaborating with different groups to achieve common goals. Many former clients, friends, and even strangers reach out to me to thank me for who I am as a person and what I've done for them. This ability to connect will enhance the school board's efforts to ensure alignment of community needs. Another strength of mine is the ability to think independently rather than follow the crowd. I take time to step back, consider all sides of the story, and conduct thorough research before making important decisions. I am not one to back down, and I will use that to protect our teachers, to protect our support staff, to protect our parents, our community members, and above all else, our kids. Overall, I'm committed to bringing my skills and my passion for improving our schools to create supportive environment back to our community. Thank you.
Steve Vigasama, same question.
So I guess the word experience is the biggest thing that I've learned to the school board, is that I have experience on the board. I've been doing this for eight years. And like I said in my introduction, there's been so much that I've learned in being a good board member. It's not just showing up at a board meeting and bringing something up on the agenda and thinking that it's going to get done. It's learning how to collaborate with all the stakeholders. That's administration and staff, getting information from parents and students. For example, when I first ran, we had a lack of a gifted and talented program for our students. Now it's called talent development, but that was something I just brought up, and it was a process. And it took a couple, about a couple of years. But I worked with the state minister, I worked with our superintendent, I worked with our curriculum development people, and now we have a very thriving program for our high-flying students. I have experience on many different boards and working with people throughout the community. I was one of the founding members of the Dr. Allen Magazine Park Project. I was a president of the New Corbana. So just with the experience that I have, that's the number one thing. The other thing is that I'm annoyingly curious. I will question things and make sure that, you know, just because we've been doing something for ten years or twenty years doesn't mean that that's the reason to continue doing that. So that's all I've got to say.
My experience in this school district as a student who passed, currently with my own children, and networking with other parents and teachers provides deep insights into some of the issues in need of solutions. I question what experience has been required across the nation for school board members that have created such low test scores, teachers dissatisfaction, and rising statistics of drug use, anxiety, depression, suicide, and a major loss of trust with parents. Maybe it's time to emphasize skills which include listening and ability to learn in order to problem-solve, bolstered by a mother's heart, common sense, and advocate on a regular basis for people whose voices are to be heard.
So again, like I said, the reason I'm running is I am a parent of recent graduates, and I'm, as a conservative, and I'm also very concerned about the decline in educational quality that we've seen here over the years. My background includes decades of experience in personal management, coupled with a strong commitment to fiscal conservatism, having successfully helped various corporate departments accountable to their budgets over the years, and I think that lends nicely to the board and what we're seeing today. In my current role as a certified financial planner, I adhere to the principles of fiduciary responsibility, prioritizing my clients' interests, and maintaining complete transparency regarding their portfolios. As a trusted financial professional, I'm consistently demonstrating my ability to place other needs above my own, putting their goal first, and ensuring impartiality in fiscal decision-making. My experience with high net worth transactions combined with capacity for collaboration positions me to effectively contribute to the board. I pride myself on being a strong communicator, capable of respectfully engaging with others that have differing opinions, and I believe these qualities will benefit the board and our community if we work towards fostering openness with our teachers, our students, and the community in large.
Micah Naramani?
Well, like I stated earlier, father of four, my kids have been... My oldest two are sixteen years old, so I have a pretty good extensive communication background with the facility group faculty and teacher staff at the school. Also a small business owner, I'm responsible for managing the business, the financial issues, problem-solving through various situations you run into and the work I've done in the past, and not just giving up on a problem because it gets too hard, standing through it and getting it done. Many years of just helping others in the community, working with community service, customer service. I'm honest in my intentions, I got nothing to hide, and I'm okay with the difference of opinion and working together to better our students and our teachers.
In terms of educational background, I have multiple master's degrees in classic linguistics, archaeology, and a master's of library and information science. In terms of experience, for the last eight years prior to our move to Fergus Falls, I was the chief operations officer of a multi-state insurance company. In my position as an operations officer, I dealt specifically with policy and procedure creation and implementation. I also was directly responsible for hiring and HR procedure as well as budgeting. So all of those are things that are part of the role of a member on school board. So that work experience applies directly. On a more personal level, service is very important to me, being part of the community you live in, giving back and actively involving yourself in what's going on to see how you can make the area you live in a better place, not only for yourself and your own children, but for everyone's children. I have a lot of experience with people of various backgrounds, whether that be financially, religiously, politically, ethnically. I have no problem working with people I don't necessarily see eye to eye with. I think our differences make us stronger, and when we can work together, it makes things better for everyone. You might see something that I don't, and vice versa. So that ability, I think, makes us stronger, is a great one.
Jenny Christensen?
For those of you who don't know me, I actually grew up in a suburb of Chicago, and from there I moved to Indiana, from there I moved to Wisconsin, from there I moved to North Dakota, and from there I moved to Minnesota. And when I first moved to Minnesota, I moved to a town called Hewitt. I don't know how many of you are familiar with that. So it was a very big culture shock for me going from Chicago to a place where their population was less than my graduating class, high school graduating class. Anyway, and the one thing I've discovered through all of my moves and all of the different places I've lived is just how important community is. As I mentioned before, I am very, very passionate about community. I'm very, very passionate about the give-and-take relationship that comes with community. I built a business here when I first moved here. That's when I really got penny caves off the ground. I have served on several boards and committees since moving here. I actually was on one of the... No, what was it? Oh, I can't think of the name now. Sorry. Oh, wait. Advisory Committee, excuse me, an advisory committee for the city. I help plan and execute events within our community, including over the river. I collaborated with organizations like the Humane Society, Someplace Safe, Habitat for Humanity. I just, I feel like giving back to your community is very important, and I feel that my passion for giving back to the community is what is going to make me an incredible member of the board, because I have that passion. I also firmly believe that there's no such thing as other people's kids. They're our kids, they're our future, and we need to make sure that we are doing everything we can to prepare them to go out into the world.
Most of my work experiences have involved working with people, which in turn means being a good listener and getting along well with them and doing research to solve any problems that they may have that needs to get fixed. So being on the school board would mean benefits would be to being able to get along well with other school board members and getting input from parents and teachers and working with everybody just to solve problems and get things rolling and make any changes that need to be done for the students if they get a proper education.
Zachary Blumberg?
As a parent of three children in the school system, I've experienced firsthand challenges families face when navigating IEP and 504 plans to address and bullying concerns. My involvement in the community as a volunteer at Land Luther Church, as a parent advocate, and a member of the Wollington Asylum Lodge have given me strong communication and leadership skills. I built relationships with various community members gaining a raw perspective on the issues that matter most. One of my key strengths is my ability to listen and empathize, which will help me engage with both teachers and families in a meaningful way. I believe in the importance of transparency and clear communication between the school board and the community. My professional background coupled with my dedication to making sure that every student has access to a safe and supportive learning environment drives my passion for creating positive change. Additionally, my commitment to ensuring fair teacher pay, better resource allocation, and a more accessible process for student support services like IEP and 504 plans will benefit our schools. My focus on is always on practical, fair solutions that will improve the educational experience for our students, teachers, and the broader community. I'm dedicated to bringing new energy and accountability to the school board. Thank you.
All right. Our second question. What role, if any, do you think the school board should have in determining curriculum? Zachary Blumberg, if you can start this one.
The school board plays an important but balanced role in determining curriculum. While we should not be micromanaging day-to-day classroom instruction, the board has a responsibility to ensure that curriculum aligns with state standards and meets the needs of our students. Our role is to provide oversight, set educational goals, and ensure that the curriculum reflects the values and priorities of the community. At the same time, it's critical that we rely on the expertise of educators who are trained in curriculum development. Teachers and administrators have the professional knowledge to know what works best in the classroom and should be trusted to develop and implement effective teaching strategies. The board should work collaboratively with them, providing input from a community perspective but not imposing personal bias. I also believe the school board should ensure that the curriculum is inclusive and represents diverse perspectives, preparing students for a complex and global world. We need to engage families, teachers, and community members in discussions about curriculum choices to ensure it meets the educational needs of all students while being respectful of different values. Ensured, the board should provide oversight and guidance while respecting the expertise of educators and involving the community.
Tim Manson?
So in determining curriculum, it is essential for the school board to work and discuss collaboratively with the curriculum director for the district, along with the educators during the curriculum cycles, to ensure that the educational programs are aligned with the needs of our students and the community. This partnership between the board, the students, the educators, and the director have several benefits. It ensures that the curriculum reflects the strategic goals and vision of the school board. It provides necessary data and feedback from the curriculum cycles or stakeholders to make informed decisions regarding resource allocation and program development. It also supports ongoing assessment and refinement of the curriculum to adapt changing educational standards and student needs. It also encourages interaction and input from all stakeholders, including our educators, parents, and learners, which is vital for creating a curriculum that resonates throughout the community. By working together, the school board and curriculum director can create a cohesive educational experience that promotes student success and effectively addresses the challenges faced by our district.
Steve Vigasama?
Well, the thing about being a school board member in all five of us, all six of us in the board, is that we are not educators. You don't go to a mechanic and have some guy at the street fix your car, right? I would say that school board members are more informed than most, and in terms of curriculum and our involvement in it, is that the state puts out standards for each type of curriculum, and those are reviewed every ten years by the state. That's our responsibility as a board, is to make sure that the curriculum that we have meets those state standards. Beyond that, when our own internal curriculum is reviewed about every eight years, so when one of the subjects is up for renewal or review, the department, the department along with the curriculum, the curriculum director will review what we have, what we're teaching right now, match it up with the current state standards, and if there's any shortfalls, we change the curriculum. But that's the responsibility of our experts, the people that are trained, that have gone to school for many years and have been educating our kids, to determine how we get to those state standards with different curriculums that they choose. Beyond that, then we, then, once they've picked a curriculum, they then, we have a committee called the District Curriculum Review Committee that is made up by a number of community members, about twenty of them or so, that then we review it and then send it to the school board for approval. The school board is the last line, and we review it as well. We ask critical questions and ultimately approve the purchase of curriculum. So the role of the school board in a curriculum should stay exactly how it is, and it's working.
Micah Naramani?
All right. The role of the school board in the curriculum, I feel like, should be non-biased, no agenda pushing, something that benefits the majority, get the kids life skills so they can function as adults after school. I would really like to see parent involvement with the curriculum, staff involvement, get the teachers, find out what our kids are struggling with, get things resolved, and just get the basic needs that these kids need to succeed in life after school. Like Steve said earlier, we are not teachers, we're not the educators. We should, all of us just work together and probably agree that to do what's best for our kids, because that's what this is about, getting our kids through school, making them functional adults so they can succeed through life.
Christina Glass?
The school board along with the community, which includes teachers and parents, should have a say and look for from our children we're taught. Impose political agendas, gender issues, and the erotic material are not subjects that are appropriate and are only confusing and creating anxieties for many students. The school board needs to focus on the basic principles of the academic curriculum, like reading, writing, mathematics, science, and history, to help prepare them for adulthood. I mean, our kids need to be kids while they can.
The role of school board in terms of curriculum, in my opinion, is pretty much where it is right now. We are not educators. We are business owners and operation officers and not educators. I have not spent my life or my education learning what is the best way to educate. I would never go to a physician and say, "I think my leg is broken, you need to cast my arm." I don't know, I'm not the expert. And I think what we're doing now is saying, are we meeting state standards? Are we hitting all of the marks that we need to hit there? Okay, we'll fill in what we're not. What are the options available to us? We weigh those options, and then we go with what is the best option for our community, and then taking into that the advice and guidance of the experts, which would be our teachers. They've spent a lot of time and money and dedication and passion in that career choice, and I think that's where those decisions lie.
Kelly Brown?
I think the school board plays a role in determining curriculum. I believe this role should be balanced with input from educational experts like our teachers. The board's primary responsibility is set broad educational goals and ensure the curriculum aligns with state and national standards. However, the school board should collaborate with our teachers, who have in-depth knowledge of effective teaching practices and current educational trends. These professionals are best positioned to develop detailed curriculum content that meets academic standards and addresses the needs of our students. It's important for the school board to consider feedback from the community and the students. Engaging with parents, teachers, the staff, community members, and students themselves helps ensure that curriculum is relevant and responsive to our children's needs and values.
Jenny Christensen?
As I understand it, the role of the school board is to ultimately approve... As I understand it, the role of the school board is to ultimately approve curriculum. But as many of us have said, I do believe we need to defer to the educators for their expertise on how to create that curriculum. Absolutely, it is our job to make sure that we're thinking critically, asking questions, being mindful, but it is not our job to control the curriculum by any means. We want to make sure that our children are leaving the school system, and whether they're going into the tradings, or going to college, or going into service, or taking a gap year, we want to be sure that what they have learned through their years within our school system allows them to be productive members of whatever society it is that they decide to be a part of. So I do agree that I think the way that our board role is now is the way it should stay. I don't think, I'm not an educator, I'm awful at math, you guys should see. I have an app on my tablet that tells me how to multiply my recipes, just so you guys know. So that's not for me to decide, but I do understand that we do have a role in approving it, and I think that that is excellent, I believe.
Arden Gino.
I do think the school board should have the role in determining the curriculum, but mainly just approving it. The decision should be up to the teaching staff and curriculum committee, just so that it's more up to the professionals than everybody else is saying, and then getting input from the community and the parents, which part of that is made up of the committee.
All right, our third question. Mental health is a growing concern in our community, especially in our young people. As a school board member, what would your responsibility be to support environments where students feel safe and included in order to optimize their learning? Arden, would you start this one?
I believe that they will need to make sure that all policies involving student safety are followed, and making sure that students are able to talk to somebody whenever needed about anything that's concerning them, or if they're having any problems at school.
Kelly Breck.
Mental health is a deep concern of mine, especially regarding our young people. It's painful to see the many pressures they face stem, that stem from the world we've created for them. As we adults, we often impose our politics and our ideologies on them, leaving them confused and overwhelmed. We handle social media, which can foster negativity and bullying rather than kindness and respect. Too often, we overlook inappropriate behaviors, adding to their burdens. It's crucial that we unite, as parents, educators, and the community, to change this narrative. As a school board member, when I become a school board member, I am committed to fostering an environment where students feel safe, included, and supported. I will advocate for mental health policies and ensure access to counseling and promote programs like Digital Detox Days. By listening to students and families, we can develop social solutions that truly meet their needs, helping every student thrive, both academically and personally. My focus will be on prioritizing mental health in schools through mental health education, anti-bullying measures, and effective support systems. I will ensure resources are allocated to mental health programs, including funding for counseling services that promote emotional wellbeing. Ongoing training for teachers and staff is essential to help them recognize and address mental health issues effectively, fostering a positive school culture. Engaging with students, parents, and our community is key to understanding their perspectives. By incorporating their feedback, we can refine our efforts to better serve our community. It's time for action, and it's time to bring back compassion.
Michael Naramoni.
I feel like there was a rise in mental health concerns in school right as the whole COVID-19 ordeal started. We shut everything off, we locked everyone up, we masked everybody, we told everybody they can't go next to each other, which really surged a rise in kids on cell phones and relying on social media. And I feel that cell phones should not be in class for one, social media has no place in school, it's horrible on these kids. The, keeping them away from their friends, locking them up, really did a lot of damage to our children, and not allowing them just to be kids. We really, really need to let our kids be kids. They don't need to grow up too fast. We don't need to push our personal agendas on them. I think removing any kind of biases, agendas, just politics in general, to our kids, and not trying to push them to grow up too fast would really break the benefit of mental health concerns in our school system. Having the resources for the kids to be able to have someone to talk to in school is very important, having those resources convert to the parents, you know, teachers that are involved, just let the kids be heard, and just let those kids be kids, and not make them grow up too fast, not subject them to personal beliefs, literature they don't need, and the cell phone use, I think, is a big one, too, with kids at school.
Tim Danson.
So the mental health and special education needs of our students is something that is extremely important to me, and it's something that has hit very close to my heart, that has impacted my family, and it's hit pretty hard. The mental health crisis is an extremely complex issue. We have to work together, collaboratively, to come up, you know, with ideas. Do I believe that the inundation of social media and certain ideologies that are being put on our educational system are having an effect on our children's mental health? Absolutely, right? I also have other ideas on how we can start to set this type, but it's going to take more than just me or a school board, and I'm eager to listen, learn, and deepen my understanding of what others feel is causing this, too, so that we can come up with meaningful solutions and start fighting back with this. Bullying also needs to stop. There can be no room for intolerance or bullying in our schools, right? We need to open up and making a difference in this arena is going to take more than just me on the school board, it's going to take more than just our school board members here, it's going to take a community, it's going to involve all of us, opening up our doors, it's going to cause us to open up our hearts, to let every child know that they're safe, they're understood, they're heard, and they're loved, right? We need to offer them a safe place to let them know that they belong in this community. So I look forward to hearing from others and to listening to others and putting together an effort that we can really start to make a difference on this front.
Steve Nigasom.
So if a student's basic needs aren't met, they can't learn. Personally, if a kid is going to class and they have an empty belly, you think it's going to be easy for them to learn anything that day, it's not. Mental health has become just as important, as from my opinion. And if we aren't doing something, if we aren't, you know, is it the responsibility of the school district to handle 100% of a child's mental health? No, we just can't, we can't. But there are things that we can do to remove barriers, there's things that we can do to insert good things into their lives that will help them have a sense of self-worth. For example, in our schools now, we have licensed counselors that kids can meet and have an actual counseling session with a practitioner from Lakeview Mental Health. One of the best things that we've done is when we changed to trimesters, we created a time update called Otter Time, it's about 20 minutes a day, and it's for a smaller group of students that may be the faculty member, and we can cover many different things, social emotional learning, there's some lessons that are being taught through that, as well as homework help, credit recovery, and just really anything the kids need. But the most important thing about it is that they have a staff member that gets to know them as they travel through high school. One of the biggest things that I think people miss and ones that struggle with mental health is that sense of self-worth, or somebody saying that they're worthy are. And our staff has loved this program, our kids love this program. It's not the only thing, there's many things to do, there's so many, it's such a complex issue, so we'll continue to be doing more in the future.
Zachary Blumberg.
As a school board member, I feel our responsibilities would be in supporting student mental health to ensure that schools create environments where students feel safe, supported, and included. Mental health plays a critical role in students' ability to learn and succeed, so fostering a positive environment is essential for the overall well-being and academic achievement. I would advocate for comprehensive mental health in our schools. As Steve said, there is currently counselors in our school, but from personal knowledge, it's hard to get into them, they are very highly booked. I would advocate for more access to counselors and social workers and mental health professionals trained to support our students facing emotional or psychological challenges. Schools should be equipped to address mental health proactively, not just reactively, so early intervention is key. I would prioritize training staff and educators to recognize signs of mental health struggles and know how to respond appropriately. Teachers and school staff are often the first to notice when a student is struggling. So giving them the tools to help students feel safe and supported is crucial. Creating an inclusive environment is equally important. I would work to ensure that schools promote respect, empathy, and inclusivity throughout curriculum. School policies and anti-bullying initiatives, every student should feel valued and that they belong, regardless of their background or personal challenges. By addressing these areas, we can create schools where students thrive emotionally and academically. Thank you.
Christina Bradley Kong.
When it comes to the mental health crisis that is impacting our students, regardless of age group, I feel like the main thing we can do is provide appropriate resources, giving them the resources or counselors and what they need to feel like they're welcome. Awareness to de-stigmatize differences. If someone is made to feel other than, their focus is not going to be on what they're learning in math class, it's going to be on all of the social things going on. We want them there to learn, we want them to be able to grow and develop into the best version of themselves, whatever that may look like for them. I really think that, in general, we're all so much more alike than we are different. And when we can remember that and de-stigmatize that negative concept of being distinct, that's a great place to start. I also think we need strong and consistent anti-bullying policies. It's not enough to have a policy that says, "If someone is bullied, X, Y, Z happens." If someone in charge is not making sure that those policies are followed consistently, no matter whose kid it is, then it's not going to work. And finally, I like the idea of upper-class mentors once you get to high school, and upperclassmen who could be assigned, if they wanted to volunteer, to work with younger incoming classmates to kind of help them get their feet about them as they start the high school journey.
Jenny Christensen.
As an individual who is learning to navigate life with generalized anxiety and depression myself, I can speak from experience that a lot of times, my mental health struggles usually coincide with feeling isolated. And I do feel that it is important for us to make sure that we are providing resources and policies and things that are available to our kids to make sure that they feel cared for, they feel loved, they feel welcome, they feel safe, because not reaching and not getting those things within your heart is what is going to cause a spiral. And I do want to reflect what Christina said, that I do think we all have a lot more in common than we do differences from each other, and trying to find those commonalities is a great way to eliminate that isolation. I also, I actually really do agree with the mentorship, I really like that idea, and expanding on that, I would love to see some kind of peer mediation program put into place. I know I had it when I was in high school, and it was really beneficial to be able to speak to another student who is trained, who is being monitored by another counselor or an adult in the room. I feel more, I would feel more comfortable speaking to a peer about my current situation with another student than I would an adult sometimes, and I think maybe that might be helpful in the anti-bullying measures that we're taking within the school system.
Christina Glas.
So with mental health, I've had to deal with it at home with my stepson because of bullying last year, and then sharing how, too, his mental health was wounded, and it's been a long haul trying to get it back up and going. Some of the things that we need to change would be removal of curriculum regarding political agendas, the inappropriate pornographic material is a start to decreasing anxiety and confusion, along with the SEL, the DEI, and CRT, which is overbearing, will help decrease stress, teasing, and bullying. I'd like to get more public speakers to come and talk to the students about mental health. I know I had them in high school, and we can have them recorded for parents to see, that way you are seeing what your children are seeing, and you are aware of what other things can go on in their life. It's really hard for my stepson to express himself being autistic and the bullying that he has had to deal with. So with the mental health issue with the bullying, it's a huge thing that we need to fix as a community, but it starts with the school system and making sure that everything is followed, nothing really is followed there lately, and kind of a downer. With the speakers, I would like to get a parent or guardian's approval form, too, so if you didn't, welcome to attend a speaker. Can't remember who it was that came to my school, but they were talking about the copyright shooting, and it was the brother of Rachel who had passed in there, it's all I can remember, but I remember every student at that school crying because they realized what just saying someone is stupid in the hallway can affect the entire life of them.
All right, our final question. What do you hope to accomplish during your term if elected? What are your priorities? Jenny Christensen, would you start?
All in all, my end goal, if I am elected, is to leave the board better than where I found it, and to leave our school system better than where it was when I found it. Are we ever going to be a perfect school district? No, because those don't exist. There's always going to be room for improvement, there's always going to be things that we can expand on because education and kids are always changing. But I just hope that I can leave it better than the way I found it. In terms of specific goals, I would love to start working on a more collaborative relationship and environment between our educators, our students, and administration, and the parents. And as I mentioned earlier, I would love to start working towards developing some kind of peer mediation program. I think that would be incredibly beneficial to all of our kids within our school district.
Arden, would you?
What I hope to accomplish during my term if elected is for the teaching staff to get enough support so that the students' math and reading test scores would go back up. And then my priorities are to make sure that the policies on bullying are followed at all times, and that building maintenance is done in a more timely manner than what it has been lately.
Kelly Breck.
When elected, I will be dedicated to creating a positive and a supportive environment in our schools. My vision is for everyone, students, parents, community members, teachers, and support staff, to communicate openly and respectfully from fear of retaliation. I want teachers to feel empowered, knowing their voices resonate, and contribute meaningfully to our community. It is essential that the teachers and support staff feel valued and recognized as a backbone of our educational system, deserving an appreciation of no matter how big or small, and regardless of union or board affiliations. I want our children to experience the joy of being kids again, filling our hallways with laughter. More recess time and opportunities for unstructured play will help them thrive, allowing them to grow free from adult pressures. Our children should not be confined to their desks all day. I envision a school environment where students feel heard, loved, valued, and safe, an environment where they can succeed academically and socially. I will advocate for a return to core educational practices, returning the Pledge of Allegiance daily. daily, bullying measures, and reducing reliance on technology like phone books and cell phones. I also want to see greater parent involvement, encouraging volunteers back in the classrooms during lunch and recess. Engaging parents and community members in the planning and decision-making processes will ensure that their voices are heard and valued. I aspire to create a school district that attracts families because it stands free from political ideologies focused on thriving academic and extracurricular environments. I am committed to making Fergus Falls the best school it can be on behalf of the entire Fergus Falls community. I will work tirelessly to make this vision a reality. I will only not stand in front of you all, but I will stand behind you and I will stand beside you to fight in this change for our school. Thank you.
Christina Bradley-Cum?
If elected to school board, I would work to create a collaborative environment where our students, our teachers, our parents, our support staff, our community as a whole, a place where everyone can feel welcome, safe, and ready to learn. The goal is to make everyone their best self, to work together to create our community as a stronger, more cohesive community, and to just create that dialogue and remind people that we're all better together when we work together, we're working for the betterment of everyone, particularly our children.
Christina Glass?
First and foremost, I would address bullying, which has been a concern for many students and parents. These issues can be addressed with a clearly defined anti-bullying policy that's followed through and has a meaningful and immediate consequence. Counseling for all or involved is important in addressing the stimulus for that behavior. This contributes to mental health issues and the safety for our students. The limited space in school libraries needs to be relieved of pornographic material for more appropriate educational resources. Removal of confusing political agenda influences in education will take longer but is no less important, because our kids need to be kids while they can, let's not introduce them to adult things until they're ready.
Micah Naromani?
What I would like to accomplish is, part of it would be transparency, no closed hidden meetings or everything recorded, open to the public, and everything has to go through the public so they're aware of what's going on. Less screen time, there's a lot of screen time, we're even having our young kids do their spelling tests on the computer, and I feel we should go back to having them write out the words so they retain that information with lockback. Our kids need to be proud that they are American citizens and have, make sure, you always have a flag in the room, we started our day with the Pledge of Allegiance, and I find that was a great part of the day growing up, and we live in America, we should be proud that we live in America. We need to focus on, I want to make the focus on reading, math, science, history, not courses for classes that don't need to be addressed, like what's discussed with CRT in classes and whatnot, have that replaced with something useful like finances, like these kids need to know how to balance a checkbook, for instance, and prepare them for life. They don't need to be told about sex, race, gender, separating races, it's just, it's not something that needs to be in the school. We need our kids to be kids, we don't need to rush them into adulthood, they have their whole life ahead of them to worry about adult situations. Our kids really just need to be kids, and that's what I got for you.
Tim Nansen?
So, I have a few priorities that I'd like to address if elected to the board. One is educating the whole student, preparing them for life outside of our district, getting them ready to be the best version of themselves they can be. We've talked about the mental health issue that's plaguing our district and our nation. I've looked at parent rights that have been removed or diminished from not only this district but others across the country, and complete transparency from all the board. We have to return to the core principles of education in my mind, focusing on the holistic development of each student and adequately preparing them for life outside of Fergus Falls once they graduate. Fergus is home to a lot of incredibly dedicated educators who are passionate about fostering the growth of our children. We need to support them, we need to hear them, we need to listen to them, and we need to get education back as the focus in our schools. We've spoken about the mental health issue that's plaguing here, and that's something that I want to address head-on from day one. Parental involvement, crucial and must be encouraged. Currently, many parents feel unheard and disrespected in our educational process. Parents are playing, need to play a vital role in their child's education, and they deserve a voice in matters concerning their children at all times. It's imperative that we not exclude parents from their children's education with dialogue. Bringing us to transparency, board members must be accountable to the community. It's essential to maintain open communication with our teachers, parents, and the general public. Holding meetings in small and confined spaces is uninvited, and while the option to watch something on YouTube is helpful, it doesn't replace the value of being welcome to participate in person. Only broadcasting certain portions of the meeting not promote transparency either, so those are my ideas, my focus, and the things that I want to accomplish here if elected.
Steve Biggison?
As I've been thinking really very hard about why I'm running and my role as a school board member. The theme, the priority that I feel has been most prevalent in the way that I think is that I want to remove barriers. That's the job of a school board. School board is to create policy, right? We're creating policy that makes it easier for our kids to learn, for our staff to do the job, and accomplish our district goals. So, a few things that I wanted to accomplish this next term. Some of the barriers we see for our staff is staff burnout. Currently, there's a humongous substitute shortage. That's certified staff, that is PERS, that's our support staff, and it's not uncommon, every district has a problem finding substitutes. But what's happening is that we're having to combine classes on some days if there's somebody that's out. We're having to have people cover, you know, well, I can cover this hour for you, we can cover this hour for this, and it's just, it's kind of a mess, you know, and we've recently been talking about a compensation plan for those folks that have to take over a class or even just a couple hours, and I just wish we didn't have to do that. So how do we track more substitutes? Well, I don't have, you know, 100% answer, but we need to incentivize people to, from the community, to step up, whether that's the barrier of the licensing or the training, whatever it might be. Maybe we need to pay them more, even though we pay more than all the listeners around us right now. Bullying is a problem, and I like our bullying policy, but oftentimes it's the execution of the policy, but also sometimes our, well, people that are trying to report a bullying incident or people that are not able to get the communication across, they need better systems and things to report that.
Zachary Glover?
If elected, my main goal is to ensure that our schools provide a safe, supportive, and enriching environment for our students while addressing the concerns of parents, teachers, support staff, administrators, and the community. One of my top priorities is improving how we handle bullying in our schools, as well as approving how we handle our IEP and 504 support plans for our students with special needs. These affect our students' mental health and academic success, and I want to ensure we have clear policies and consistent enforcement in place to protect our students. I also want to create an environment where our students feel comfortable reporting these issues, knowing their concerns will be taken seriously. Another priority is increasing transparency between the school board and the community. Parents and community members deserve to be informed about the decisions being made and have a voice in those decisions. I want to come up with open communication and make sure that the board is listening to and addressing the concerns of families and educators. Finally, I want to focus on supporting teachers by advocating for fair period and ensuring they have the resources they need to succeed in the classrooms. Teachers shouldn't have to use their own money to provide basic classroom supplies. By supporting our educators, we improve the overall quality of education for our students. My term would be to be dedicated to these key goals, safety, transparency, and support for educators, as well as the ultimate aim of improving the educational experience for every student in our district. Thank you.
Thank you. Please vote, please encourage the people around you to vote. Thank you for being here tonight. Just a reminder that you will have the opportunity to vote for three candidates from the votes that you heard from tonight. Appreciate the professional, respectful dialogue and the intent listening, and safe travels, everyone.